Okay, it is eight o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public discussion. I believe we have some folks from A-Bate here. Appreciate them being with us and this was probably the appropriate time to to have that or bring that up, since it wasn't on our agenda specifically.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Um, you want to help?
If anybody wants to speak, just come up to the podium and and I know there was, yeah, some issues need to be addressed. Yeah, just state your name.
Dave Duffy, state coordinator of A-Bate of Iowa. Uh, there were some concerns, I guess, at the last meeting about some donations that we've made in the past. Um, first I want to say that's what they are, donations. Last year, our donations are based on how good our rally is funded. Um, last year we had a down year because of all the rain. So when you have a down year, you have to make cuts. And our cuts are, first thing is donations to other places. Uh, we decided not to do a donation to the EMS just because, uh, uh, Coosum County, that would be an essential service, gets money from our taxes now, where they were a volunteer before. And they also are, get paid as they take people in. Everything that we see was, um, based on having an ambulance or a rig at our property. And we did not have an ambulance or a rig at our property to, um, to help with those costs, um, on that. Our, you know, for a donation next year, it all depends on how our rally goes. And we look at that after we get all our numbers in, in September. And then we make those decisions on those donations. Not saying that there would or would not be a donation, but again, that's based on how, how good we do for income. Uh, we're a volunteer organization. The rally out there, which funds our organization for the full year. It'd be like, uh, for you guys in Coosum County, your budget based on how the county fair did. And if you have a bad county fair, then you got to figure out what you have to do different on your budget for the next year on that. I guess, do you guys have questions based on anything to me that I can address with that?
Well, I guess based on the comments you just made, did you cut out all donations or just donation to the EMS?
Uh, we cut back on some other donations. Um, the reason we cut the, uh, donation to EMS is because of being an essential service and them getting the tax money now. And they get paid for services I leave if I didn't.
So getting, getting paid from a call is not anything new.
Right, right.
That, that would have been the same, that it would have been previously. So I guess your justification there seems to be that if tax dollars are going to fund it, that you're not gonna contribute or help pay for the extra services that you guys are receiving for a special event once a year?
Uh, last year we did because of how our income was. Not to say that's not gonna change, we have a decent year this year. Not to say that there won't be a donation. But like again, that's all based on our, our number and our financial situation for what money comes in.
What level of service do you expect out there?
If there was a call, if something would be deemed that somebody needed to go into the hospital, that they reply to a call. We don't, we don't really require them to be out on, on the grounds, on the site, um, to staff for that.
Were they previously out on the grounds?
Sometimes, yes, they were. And stuff, and then some, in the past when they were at the grounds. So we have given donations anywhere from a thousand to a few thousand dollars to them.
When they're on the grounds?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in past years when we've had an ambulance on the grounds, you've given a donation on the years we don't?
Yes, well, I believe, I believe last year was the first year that we have not gave a donation.
Last year was the first year?
Yes, okay. And like I said-
Regardless of level of service?
Yep, uh, during COVID, they weren't on the grounds, we gave a donation then. Um, like I said, it was based on, our income was way down because of all the rain and flood that we had, um, on that last year.
Do you even know how many calls, I mean-
Average, average, we do-
Average calls?
Average, we do about, there's about seventy here, I believe, um, seven that gets called out. Some may not be merchants, it just might be heat stroke, this and that, that they want to look at.
I bet if we check our records, it'll be higher than that.
I, I said average. I mean, I know there's some years that there's seven, eight, you know, up to twelve, but I would say average is about seven calls a year.
Anything you'd like to say, Phil?
Sure. Um, I don't want to build a wall between us and A-Bate, I really don't. The very first year of A-Bate was here, I worked A-Bate, I worked first aid stands for many years as a volunteer. Um, what has changed over time is, when you guys first came, we were able to staff at A-Bate with volunteers. Um, as volunteerism has declined, as we went to essential service, over the past five, six, seven years, now we have to do a full-time staff. So our staff are required to give up their Fourth of July weekend every year to provide a service. And I have to pay them overtime if that's where they're at on their pay scale. Our current day, like today, we have four people on duty in the, in the county, uh, to cover our county. During the rally, we run anywhere from seven, um, seven or eight people every day during the rally. So we about double our staff during the rally. Um, last year we ran nineteen calls to A-Bate Park, um, during their six, forty, fortieth anniversary, I believe it was last year. Correct? So it was extended period, it was extended days. So we did have extended expenses because we had staff on duty for, for extra days for that event. Normally we, normally we staff Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Uh, Friday, Saturday would be in our busy days. Last year was one extra day, um, because of the, the anniversary. Our calls, um, as we, as he stated, we went to essential service for tax dollars. Our revenue, we, we generate about thirty percent of the revenue that we need from call revenue. Hence is why we had to do essential service and ask for the tax levy. So two-thirds of our revenue comes from tax dollars, donations, uh, grants I write, um, et cetera, things like that. Fundraisers. So, yes, we do receive money from calls during the event, but amongst about a third of what our actual expenses are, um, to cover that. Yes, we have made a change and COVID was kind of a reason why we made the change as far as not having a truck at the park. We tried it that year just because of trying to keep separation, you know, due to, due to COVID. And it seemed like it did work okay, responding, um, to the park from there. And we've kind of continued that trend. Um, last year for, uh, at the anniversary, working with, uh, for a state station at the park, I asked them, what do you want for coverage this year? And I've done this, this is the sixth year, our sixth year now that I've scheduled the park. And last year I said, what do you want for coverage for the anniversary? You're expecting more people, what do you want for coverage? And it was, we want one truck available twenty-four hours a day, which we staff in town. Plus, we had planned to staff a truck out there, um, from noon till two AM and later, deeming if it's still active at the park at two AM for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, for three straight days. They asked what would cost to staff that, I gave them an estimate last year. And that, that's where that ended. So we did, we did, so being that that conversation ended, we, as, as Mr. Duffy stated, we did not have, uh, a crew at the park last year, we just had the extra crew in town. Plus, we always staff my suburban during the event to have that third vehicle available for a response of two vehicles, two ambulances on the road, plus the unit in the north part of the county. So that's just a little history on how we staff it and how it works. I think the biggest issue we've had in the past is, is the communication barrier between us. It seems like we always get second, I get secondhand information from, from people, relay secondhand information back to them. So I think our biggest issue is, is communication. It'd be nice if we could go to communication between, between the board and myself or our advisory council, one or the other, so we can work together forward. But my big question last week, and it still is, is how do you want me to staff for the rally? If we're not gonna have a donation again, which I was told that we would not get a donation again this year. Um, it wasn't based on outcome, which I'm glad to hear that it's possible, going to get a donation back again. It was fifteen hundred dollars up to two thousand nineteen. After two thousand nineteen, they did cut it to one thousand dollars a year, um, from that point forward. So it was reduced, but our costs have actually gone up as the volunteers have gone down with use of full-time staff. So instead of going from fifty hundred to a thousand, it probably should have went up a little bit. I feel it's fair that we asked, that we received something back, um, to help offset the cost of our extra staffing during the event. I, I agree, we do get some revenue, it shouldn't be the full amount of our costs. That's why I felt that was fair, only charging, um, the extra labor. No overtime, just the extra labor based on the fifty dollars an hour for two people, which is the same amount that we charge other events that happen in this county. We should do charge other events when we are on standby for them as well.
What's that total? What's that total? Did, did you come up with that?
For the fifty dollars an hour?
Yeah.
Did, uh, so, it's always over the Fourth of July. So on the Fourth of July, it's time and a half, so it's seventy-five dollars an hour for that day, twenty-four hours a day. That's about eighteen hundred dollars just for the Fourth, twelve hundred for the two days beside it. That's not putting a truck at the park, that's just the extra people in town. And so that's about, what, forty, five hundred bucks? And if you do, you know, two-thirds of that amount, you're looking at about three thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So that roughly what the figure he threw out is about twelve hundred dollars a day. Um, I also see your guys' agenda last, from last, uh, week when you met, that you guys are having, uh, RAG Rite. Has the same, uh, for Ben, thrown the RAG Rite to help cover that expense as those people are in your county when they come through?
Wow.
RAG Rite brings four ambulances and, um, other vehicles. We do not provide any coverage to that event.
But do you staff extra because they're in your county?
No, we're gonna put, we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna locate differently because of the direction they're coming through our county and splitting our county and trying to respond through the traffic. We're just gonna, we're gonna station a little bit different. I'll be in a truck that day versus in the office that day is about the only change that we're gonna make for staffing.
Which is a question I had, because I know that's a big influx also coming into your county.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the big obvious distinction to make is they bring medical attention to provide for their event. So if you don't expect to do that, then there should be some consideration made for your-
And, and we have our first aid staff that's out there, that does stuff on the grounds.
Four ambulances for RAG Rite is a little more than first aid. You could bring a box of Band-Aids and call that first aid, but four ambulances is serious medical attention if needed.
But there is also a chance that the county could be using the call, calls if there's more incidents than four ambulance can handle.
Could happen, anything could happen, but, but our staff, our staff isn't guaranteed to be prepared for that. I mean, if there's, there's mass casualties in two or three different places, we're not gonna have the staff to handle that on a normal day. So I guess that's the point in talking about staffing is our, our normal call volume is based off of, say, what, twelve, thirteen hundred calls a year?
Okay, call fifteen.
Um, plus, plus transports.
Yes.
So that's our, our average, normal baseline, so to speak. The event that you guys hold is outside of just handling our normal population that lives here, visitors coming through or whatever. So obviously, if there's a car accident, someone from another county or another state is coming through, that's, that's not anything we necessarily know or can plan for when the call comes in. But all that's part of our normal day-to-day operations, um, to cover the people of this county. And that's what that tax levy is put in place for, um, covering the people that live and work and play here.
Sounds to me proposals been made as far as coverage. You're, you're not expecting an ambulance at the park, but but we're gonna fill out, we're gonna have to staff, still gonna have to staff extra for it.
It's not fair to, the residents, it's not fair to A-Bate, it's not fair to my staff, not to staff up for the event. I'm not gonna run two people crazy for twenty-four hours a day for three days trying to cover the county and, and an event that's happened in our county. We have to staff up for it and handle it properly. We know what's happening, we have to prepare and we have to cover it properly. Regardless of any funding or how the funding happens, we have to prepare. We're either gonna incur the cost ourselves and eat it, or they're gonna help offset the cost. That's, that's the question.
Have you looked into what it costs to have an ambulance on site?
Just the number that Phil quoted for having-
I'm talking about of your own. Yeah. Do you like, how's RAG Rite doing, but just of your own?
No, we have not looked into that, 'cause I know there's some, if we did, there'd be some hoops to go through.
Sure.
I believe if-
Regular story stuff.
And I will just, I, uh, Phil told me that he heard rumor that we were going to Humble County to ambulance staff our thing, which was a rumor that, that's the first I heard of it, uh, too. Um, no, I have not looked into it. Um, I guess if we were looking to staff it that way, yeah, then we would look at that cost and that cost would be taken to our board of directors and stuff and saying, hey, we're gonna staff our own ambulance there. This is part of the cost, and they would vote on that.
I'm just, just curious and then put your thousand dollar donation towards your, towards having an ambulance out there. I, I don't know. And then we staff it normally and but I, I, yeah.
I mean, the donation will be brought up again at the, our September meeting and, uh-
Sure, yeah.
And decided there and stuff and like it is every year.
Do you see the importance of, you know, what, what Phil is trying to do? I mean, do you understand why he's trying to do that? He's trying to help and-
Oh, yeah, no.
-cover your rally.
Yeah, no, I fully understand, so you understand my, my wartime job? I'm the H S manager at a, at a facility. So I understand, um, that my sister's a paramedic, which helps out there at the rally as a volunteer. Um, so yes, no, I know the importance of an ambulance and stuff like that on that, but-
So the plan for that is more expensive, you know, for Coosum County because you don't know. I mean, it can be an average of seven, but you could have thirty calls. I mean, you don't know.
Well, we had nineteen last year.
You have no idea.
No, we don't, and then there could be a year, there could be three, you know, honestly.
So I just hope that you realize that it is an added cost to us to try and cover your event so that your people-
And I, and I, you know, like I said, if we have a regular decent year, could there be a donation, yes. I also believe that A-Bate helps the county because we bring an influx of six to ten thousand people and we also have the one percent county tax, which helps income into the county. It helps, uh, some of your little businesses, um, with the revenue they make. So I, I think it's more than, I think A-Bate gives more than just the, to the ambulance service. Um, in years past, we've done the law enforcement mud run out there. We gave donations to when you guys built the big red, uh, disaster trailer. Um, so there have been other donations throughout the year, just not to the ambulance service.
Wow.
I would like to work towards an agreement going forward instead of based on just if we have money, we give a donation, you know, let's, you know, if it's a contract, we're contracted, please say, yeah, we're gonna do this. This is a cost we incur. Come up with an amount that's satisfactory to the, to the A-Bate people and satisfactory to the, to you guys. And just set the amount and it's, it's a cost of doing business. Whether you make money at the rally or not make money, it's, it's a cost of doing business. We incur the cost whether they make money or not, our expense is still the same. So we still have a cost of doing business whether they're profitable or not. Um, I did bring up a suggestion, um, in conversation, I don't know if it ever came back to you guys, is put a dollar surcharge on your, on your ticket price as a, as a medical, our EMS tax, or EMS charge. And anything that's over the amount that you give us, put towards first aid station for their supplies, for their equipment and stuff.
And I would be opposed if-
Here, four thousand.
Our board meeting and propose that to our board and then let the board discuss that. He's more than happy to bring that towards our board on one of our meetings.
I did propose it to some members and they said that they took it back to the board and it was voted down. Like I say, it's all secondhand information that I've gotten.
I said that's never came to our board to be discussed, so.
Okay.
But we are, we were over here-
Where does your board meet?
Our state office is in Eldora, Iowa. Uh, we meet every, every other month. We do have a meeting, July, we do do at the park, 'cause it's right after the rally. Um, but like I said, otherwise it's the second weekend of the month. You know, our board meetings are on Sunday, usually at eleven o'clock. The, the only two meetings that we do not have in Eldora is because the rally, we do do it out there at the park at our bright red building. And then we have a, uh, yearly conference in November and that board meeting is usually held where that conference is held. Uh, this year it's in Council Loss. Uh, the meeting in July at the rally is at ten o'clock and not eleven, but otherwise they're at eleven.
Well, maybe that'd be a good time to figure out what the donation would be for this year, after, at the meeting, right after the rally.
We don't have what our, what we, the numbers are still coming in for what the expense is, anything. All those numbers are usually in it, in September, that's why they'll do, all those donations are, are decided into the September board meeting.
I don't, I don't think your profit and loss changes the situation of what we, what we spend for, um, providing services. I think that was made pretty apparent already.
Well, I think I, I think I agree with the needs to have something going forward, just consistent year to year, whether that be a contract run up, whether that be a surcharge on ticket sales, just so that conversation, or we're not coming back to the conversation and just, both parties know this is the expectation. Year to year we move on. I think that'd be, whatever that ends up being. I'd, I'd, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, like I said, more than happy to go to the board, uh, discuss that, uh, through a contract of the, you know, if it's a dollar or a flat-
They could, they could come here too, if you want.
Um, our, our board is all volunteers, so it's hard to get people that are volunteers to get on board, um, to get to a meeting. Uh, that, especially during the week, um, all, all our people have a full-time job. I mean, I took vacation on-
If you, if you let me know where your September meeting is, I would be happy to drive down.
Yeah, it's at Eldora, Iowa, at our state office, and I need to be there.
Okay. Sounds like that can be our plan of action going forward then.
Any other questions?
Don't hear any.
Okay, thank you for-
Yeah, really appreciate you guys being here today and-
So I'm gonna go ahead and get my schedule planned for the rally with that number of people so that I can start getting staff in place, so I know what's happening.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
Thanks.
Okay. Seeing no other public here, we will, uh, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda and minutes from the meeting dated May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Motion by Whacter, second by Haas. Need discussion on the agenda or minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Discussion, decision, review and approve claims. Everyone had a chance to look at the claims? Questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion at any time.
So?
Motion by Stucker. I'll second. Second by Whacter. Any discussion on the claims? If not, uh, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. We have our budget status report. Everyone had a chance to look at that, it's our last month before the new fiscal year.
I just have one question, Department ninety-nine, Service Area Six.
Yep.
Was that something that was part of the budget amendment? Because it looks like there's something that's-
Amendments, yes.
It sure could have been.
One point, one million dollars was in the amendments.
Yeah.
It's in the department and it's like
the internal transfer, the, um, would have been one million dollars of it and then-
Seven hundred and eight?
Yeah.
Would have been various things or?
Yeah, I'd have to look for sure to, to make sure, but-
Part of the last budget amendment.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you're looking at the-
Thirty-three hundred dollars?
The oh-six, um, search here.
Yeah. In Department ninety-nine. Who are not, you know, older in that whole department, but that service area, so maybe it's okay.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the-
That'd be the tip stuff.
Well, not that, not that in particular, would not be tip, no.
So it's only thirty-three hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, no, I wonder.
No, you're not. Uh, oh, you're looking at the-
He's looking at the minutes.
So that doesn't have it broke down by service area?
Okay, that's, does it my department?
He was looking at the minutes from last week.
All right, well, I, it was just something I noticed, so I was just curious if that was part of it.
Any other questions on the budget status report? As far as we can, off the record reflect, we've acknowledged those. Thank you, Jamie. And then we have discussion, decision, approval of liquor license for A-Bate of Iowa Incorporated. Need a motion? Okay, motion by Haas. Need a second?
A second.
Second by government. Any discussion on approving of the liquor license for A-Bate?
Well, not directly with the liquor license, but I would, I would hope we get our EMS stuff sorted out before this comes up next year.
Yep. That's, I think that's the plan. Okay, all in favor of approving liquor license for A-Bate of Iowa? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
I have four ayes and one nay. Okay, motion carries four to one. Discussion, decision, approval of fireworks permit for A-Bate of Iowa. Need a motion to approve fireworks permit. Okay, we got a motion by Whacter. Second?
I can second it, I want to, I want to discuss.
That's fine, yep. Okay, second by Haas, discussion?
Let the fireworks, they can change, they, why are we, uh, issuing permits?
So, um, I did put the copy of, of the law, or, you know, what the county has always followed. They can still ask for a permit if they want to, and I think they just do it because they always had. There's no reason why you, you can't, you can still, you, you can't prevent them from doing it. Um, but I think it's just because they've always asked for one in the past, they just keep asking for one, so.
Cause I think legally, between the third and the twelfth or something like that, the third and eighth.
Or let's see, it says here, through June first through July eighth and December tenth through January third.
Okay.
Uh, there's hours that, um, they can use, um, as the only-
Correct, yep.
-thing, but there's nothing that says you can't still sign the permit if, if they ask for one. It's completely up to you.
Yep, okay.
Is it a-
And this, and this is-
Maybe we have a list of permits that we knew every year that's just when it's on, um, probably because the, with the law changing or the law just changed, uh, here this session.
Yeah, there's been an additional change this session.
Yeah.
So, um, Senate File three oh-three was passed, um, and that allows the Board of Supervisors or the cities to, um, pass an ordinance or resolution that, um, prohibits the use of consumer fireworks or display fireworks on other days other than July, does it, I have it pulled up here actually. Other than July third, fourth, December thirty-first. So you can prohibit fireworks if you do a resolution or ordinance other than those days. Um, new law that takes effect July first. But this is.
Sure.
There's just a, but like I said, we have a list of permits that we know we have and we have had in the past and just go down that list, fill them out.
Yep.
That's what I figured it was.
Yep. Standard procedure.
Yeah, so whether you approve it or not, they still can do the fireworks.
We're just trying to get along.
Yeah.
We want to be here.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Okay, any further discussion on fireworks permit? If not, uh, do a roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Okay, motion carries unanimous? Decide.
Give this one and this one, two copies there and then this for the liquor license.
Hey Doug, it's Josh at the boardroom. We are due to, uh, right away. All right, thanks. Unless we need a break already.
I, I think we're good.
Three minute break.
It's like class at school. Go to the bathroom before you come in. Just that one spot.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can sign this, can I?
Oh, yes.
Holy buckets, there's a lot of.
There's a lot, cause we have a lot of resolutions.
Okay.
Last week.
It's nice. That or Tammy's just having fun with the stickies.
Yeah, that could be too.
Never know. These are all the claims here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Just make sure you get the three and zero.
Now, I, it was almost June thirty.
Yeah.
Okay. We're up to construction right away whenever you're ready.
Sure, we have, uh, one request for, uh, utility in the road right away. This would be on one hundred and twenty avenue B nineteen of Burt, uh, south. Uh, about, I think it's about a mile. MediaCom, they're replacing a fiber optic line there. Doing some maintenance work and I would recommend board would approve of this, uh, request.
Okay. We have motions out of fact?
I'll do that.
Motion by Haas, second by Wactor. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carrying.
Okay, and then we just, uh, we have a bridge construction project that, uh, has now started and the road is closed, so uh, we'll ask the board to take formal action to close that road with the resolution provided. This would be the bridge north of Sexton.
I think they were talking about this online.
Yep, yep. Motion by Stucker. What was that?
A second.
Second by government. Any discussion on the road closure? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, we need to.
Oh, sorry, resolution number zero six, zero three, two five, oh one. Will need a roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous?
You'll sign that one, Carter and Tammy. Carter, sign that one, please. All right, perfect, thank you.
You do.
That's all the, uh, road right away construction.
Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, the work with the asphalt projects, uh, patching is now completed on those. Um, I know there are road closed signs, Carter, I don't know if anyone's been asking, but down on that Hannah Road, we're gonna get those road closed signs taken down. So, uh, the road will be open to traffic here. They won't have to weave in and out of.
Okay.
So we should be getting that taken care of.
Well, we're resurfacing that.
We will be, yes, but they just, they have not moved in yet. Uh, they were delayed a little bit on their previous project, so we anticipate them coming in kind of the middle of June.
Gotcha.
For that. Uh, other maintenance, patching, uh, we have, uh, completed a lot of, uh, places last year where we worked on paved roads and we've gotten some, a lot of maintenance patching completed as well. We still have that Western Hills work to do and we'll get that taken care of sometime this summer. Goderson Smith, the bridge that we just closed the road on, the bridge deck has been removed and they are doing some work to start staging some. They'll be able to, uh, start construction on that. Uh, slurry leveling, uh, work continues up on P fifty-eight. Humboldt County also has some work. I think they're gonna be doing some slurry leveling on C twelve from Laverne to one sixty-nine and we'll have, uh, half of the bill to pay for that. I've been talking with Ben, the kids who, or Humboldt County engineer about getting that work completed. And then crack filling, uh, blacktop services up on P thirty north of Highway eighteen. They'll be finishing that up and then they'll be going down south of the E-road, south of, uh, P fifty-eight. There's three miles there that has some cracks and they'll be filling those and then that'll be pretty much taken care of. Uh, we also, just this morning, I received a application or, uh, it's an agreement for Kimbley Horn to, uh, write a grant. Agro counties, Hancock County, Winnipegle County, um, Franklin, seems like there's one more. We're trying to put together some of our safety projects that have been identified in our, our Safe Streets for All reports. Uh, trying to put together a grant application that might be attracted to the federal highway. Uh, we have three projects in there, one of them being, uh, putting some edge, uh, extra pavement, extra width of pavement and, uh, centerline rumble stripes and edge line rumble stripes that, uh, that'd be on B nineteen from Burt over to the west of the county line. Uh, that's the most expensive project in Consoo County. We also have some curves identified for some of the same types of, uh, opportunity. Uh, I'm reviewing everything, but I may have something on the agenda for the board to approve of that agreement next week. But, uh, if you do see something like that, we'll talk about it more. But these are places that were identified in our safety action plan. Um, that was completed, uh, right at the end of last calendar year. Uh, other than that, um, we keep on moving forward, so.
Did you happen to see all those little internet signs?
Yes, I did. I, actually I saw some up, um, because they're in the northern part of the county.
Oh, okay.
So they're not just.
Isolated in that area.
Isolated in this area.
They're all over Bell Island County also.
Okay.
Are they?
Yeah, I'd, I'd seen some over there too, yeah.
So, anyway, yeah. It would take a while to go and pick them up.
Is that just a private company going around and putting them at all the corners or?
I have no idea. Um, I believe our movers will be picking them up.
Sure.
Rebooting them.
Okay.
Sorry?
Yep, thanks Doug.
Very good, thank you.
And I guess any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
We got time for a little.
Why don't you ta- take a little break and we'll get ready for your interviews.
No, I just didn't see that yet.
You didn't come, right? How do you get by you?
I have no idea. So I saw it passing down, I was like. Where was I?
There it is.
Go.
I will discuss the assessments first.
Okay.
My eyes are. Bugging out a little bit because, uh, I just had my glasses yesterday afternoon. First time in five years.
There was only one thing beside you, is that correct?
That's all I had.
Yeah, so our credit card should be on the next one.
See my message? We're, we're. You had me ask why they didn't cut their fireworks.
They can't afford to have services.
That's why I laughed before you got to those items because I don't.
Well, they're still here if you wanted to ask.
If you saw my email after the last meeting, now I don't need to stir bait up anymore.
No, I don't know.
Did everybody leave?
I think so.
Okay. It's, it's wet and raining outside.
Oh, you had to run outside?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like it's gonna be like that pretty much all day.
And maybe tomorrow too?
New glasses yesterday. And my. You got new ones? Yeah, my first group, I got them after a few years. So it's taking a little bit, it used to. I picked them up at four o'clock yesterday and wore them the rest of the day yesterday, put them on this morning, I still have.
Might have been better off to stay with the same old for one more meeting and change on Wednesday.
And I'm the type of person that's like, I'm gonna have to just rip the Band-Aid off.
There is a, there is truth to that.
Should I ask Phil? So do they go to the ra- Iowa races, but do they, does Ann and Sarah go to the races every week and do they charge them? Or are they?
I think last. I think it's the fire and rescue.
I think they usually have someone available, but we don't have extra staffing.
They're at Prince Road, you know, there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've had to leave in the middle of the races before.
I've seen that, I, 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 I've seen them leave like football game or something the next two.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, they go to football games and stuff, but I think that's, that's the big difference is we don't have extra staffing for it. So I don't know, we have heart there and they can just follow some normal old things and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, yeah, if something else comes up, they go.
Yeah.
They have to.
But I think last week they had, they didn't realize, I mean, our fire departments had. But I think last week they had, they didn't realize, I mean, our fire departments have. Maybe lots of.
Well, and that. Elbona doesn't have ambulances, well, none of our fire departments have ambulances. It'd be another talent, an ambulance.
Okay, that's probably what it is.
Yeah, but, but actually, and you can double check this Phil, but I'm pretty sure they get um. People to sign up for those like volunteers, who'll sign up and know I'll cover this race and I'll cover this football game. So I think most of the time they try to have people helping cover that as well. So that if there are other things in the county, the first duty crew can respond to that. And still have coverage at those events, but it's, I wanna say it's primarily volunteers.
Like I said last week, no matter what, you're gonna have a situation where. Even, even if they had ambulances out there, they can still have a situation where there's more than one.
Two at a time.
Or four.
Yeah.
The worst case scenario. Doesn't matter, thinking about it, doesn't matter, you know, I, I don't know. Freight landings.
Hope for the best, plan for the worst.
Well. You can't plan for the worst, that's the whole thing, I think.
No.
You can't staff for the worst.
No.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, yeah.
And look at that, that's pretty, isn't it?
It is pretty. I like your design work.
You draw on it?
Well, she's got colors.
I went over across the street to get the folder and it was wet, so it was.
I wondered what spilled on it, okay, okay. This is a very interesting spill work.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
This looks like artwork on some of it.
I know.
Yeah, it looked like it.
That's the best I could ever do.
I'm sure there's a template on Microsoft Word or something that'll make it look like that.
Similar, but that's unique.
That's unique, that's original.
Yeah.
Our copyright.
At least it's a pretty green uh, folder.
A lot of. Beans that we have at different times up in the north part of the county too. We got a lot of, you were the first few on that plan, you don't have.
I mean, I've seen some names, but I guess I didn't look at those.
What do you mean?
It's a widespread thing.
A lot of, there's a lot of those, you know, you just thought the last three when they got it all going.
Yeah.
Kind of depends on what window you hit there.
For me, even the, I say the first ones, I wouldn't have, the last one, I don't, I mean, they were only a week apart from the four to the twelve, but.
Sometimes with cooler weather, it doesn't really make, make them.
Yeah.
Go faster either.
You have a war for a long time, you might decide to make a horrible. You're talking, hey, a little bit of the normal, it's pretty horrible.
Depends on when you cut because.
Quirms and stuff.
I know.
Bow leg riders.
And he got his put up right before.
He's cleaning out the desk, just takes piles.
Hope he didn't have a hundred dollars back.
Exactly.
My first flower did that, I mean, there were a few flowers out there, but they were rare, it was, it was right at the edge of flowering for a lot of them though, and. I guess, I think they hit the timing pretty good on that, because that's kind of your. I don't know, but I've always been watching, seen, that's kind of your balance between condition quality, you hit it pretty good.
My question was the end of May, for June, is that the normal time?
Yeah, middle to end of May, you know. Yeah, I don't think we're too far off, you know, as far as, well, I guess I would have looked at like.
We were, we were ahead, but I imagine we regressed a little.
Yeah, probably. I'm looking forward to see what stuff does now that we got it ranked right after I got these cut. Usually that shoots it right back out of the gully suit.
Need a ruler.
That's fine, you need a ruler.
Took a little longer, I'm sorry, it's not talking.
You're good.
You're good. Figured you were.
We're not done reading yet.
I was, I didn't get a break, I was.
Okay, well, we're all back, so um. Of course, I don't have my agenda in front of me, here we go, alright. Discussion fall twenty twenty five drainage assessments.
So, the two pages you have. Are preliminary um repairs and uh, what just new sheet is a work in progress. Um, the. So it has the repairs, the outstanding warrants, um, interest. Um, your subtotal and then what the levy is on the far side. Um. And then if there's waivers due or FEMA funds due, that column is filled in. And the second page is just more of the same that are not repairs, but are um, projects that have had waivers on them, so. The DD sixty sub four is not, we haven't had our completion hearing completed yet, so. I don't have all those totals in there, but they had discussed what a possible assessment would be for that.
If there's a dash there under the waivers, do you column, does that mean zero?
It's a zero, I put a zero in and it just puts this dash in.
For sixty sub four, off the top of my head, I'm gonna say probably the only thing that we wouldn't have already would be damage claims.
Yeah, different, yeah, there's a change in whatever the damage.
Yeah, so we should have most, I mean, we should be able to get pretty close on a project of that magnitude.
Right, right, yep.
If we had. Five thousand in damage claims, it wouldn't change it a whole lot. But that's just off the top of my head, like you said, I mean. We'll obviously need numbers plugged in there, but I think that's pretty. Close to complete, I don't expect any more significant bills there that we wouldn't already know about.
Is there a way to add a tiny column that puts the supervisor number in there? It, it, cause I, I kinda was looking, I'm like, I hope it's not there, I'm asking for that and it's not.
Yeah.
Um, just so, you know, I don't know.
That's where I'm going through my districts.
So I can, yeah, prepare myself for anything that will be assessed, so in case that, there's questions.
Well, and, I mean, I'm not looking at this list in particular when I say this, but some of them might cross a couple districts, like you and I would have some that go on hold, so. Even if there's a couple of us, that might be a good thing, you could add four and five pretty easy here, so, so. Good idea. Only have one picture. Yeah, and yours is probably not gonna be.
Probably not on.
It's gone out there, I already found that out.
So if there's nothing in the column. For calculated levy. So like, the first line.
Right.
DD four repair.
Yeah.
Um, there's nothing in the calculating levy column, um, has all of that already been assessed?
The um, based on the waivers due and the FEMA funds due. The amount needed is a negative?
Okay. So that FEMA money due, is that to that, one of those projects that we've talked about?
Um, we're waiting, yeah, we're waiting for that.
What project is it that we're waiting for FEMA money for on DD four?
Um, fifteen eighty-three, the final.
Close out.
Close out, there is more money to come in.
There's supposed to be.
Okay. And July first, they'll be. Considering that again. And that two point nine million will be assessed for DD.
Sixty sub.
Sixty sub four. Those are the, what we have meetings for, right? I mean.
Yeah, we got, we got some hearings for that one.
And that's final and done?
We have to do the completion hearing again because, which we already scheduled that, but um, we. At our last completion hearing, we had landowners in here with concerns and their, the contractor wasn't finished with the stuff, so um.
Yes, there were some things that hooked up.
Doing, well, yeah, there's, there's a couple things left to be done in general, but um.
They're saying that still hasn't been done, hooked up.
Landowners are saying that?
Yeah.
For that intake? No, that's not done.
Like, just being told that there's still stuff not being.
Um, I guess I was.
That have not been done, so.
I was notified about a washout or something there, sinkhole over the weekend, I sent that to Tyler. Monday morning, they're gonna go up and look at that, but I'm not aware of any other issues up there that are outstanding.
I'll make sure they have the right one, right?
Yeah.
Right repair, right catch up.
Yep.
Double check on you.
Yeah, so we, we have that completion hearing scheduled again, so we'll talk about that specifically there, but yeah, the majority of those expenses should be already um. Finalized for the most part. Yeah, we should, we should be doing a assessment in that neighborhood.
So when it's assessed like that, when it's like two point nine million, are there going to be waivers offered?
Yeah, that decision would.
Yeah. Yeah, and so that just doesn't appear on here this year, but it does next year?
Yeah, so once, once we do the assessment, then the landowners would have the option to sign up for waivers or pay their bill entirely.
Yeah.
Um, and once they sign up for waivers, then it should be in that waivers due column, so.
Okay.
It would be in the waivers, the year following would be the assessment. Cause nobody would know.
Right, 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 cause they have till like the end of August or something to sign up for those, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay, that. Doesn't look like there's anything else that's super large.
Marge is, is uh. The work that was done. Trying to find it. Or for Rod Meyer or Scott Mansky to that, is that being assessed for this call?
Yeah, that's one of the eighty threes, I'm not sure, drain eighty-three.
Drain eighty-three. Oh, okay, that's in Woodmore Township, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, I think on the far side, yeah. Is it fourteen?
Or is it Cresco?
No.
No, it's, it's Rod, yeah.
Yeah, it's lap fourteen.
I must not have that one out here.
In March, page two, um, are there no levies for those assessments for those, or you just haven't gotten that far?
There doesn't need to be, or doesn't appear to be amount needed in these yet, so. They're just waivers due.
Um.
Just to have a running list and keep that. I don't have all of the waivers on there, but that was my start.
You don't have all the waivers on the second page?
Just, yeah, just see what you guys wanted, if this is how you wanted it, if you wanted something different, I wasn't sure.
For DD eighty-two, we've got an amount needed of about eighty-one and a half thousand, um. Was that?
It's a big drain and there were a lot of repairs in different spots, a lot of washouts.
Okay, is that all last year, or in this class?
Yeah, I got invoices with that too.
Okay.
Cause there were several like repair requests in different spots.
Okay. How about like those other DD eighty-three laterals, I mean, we've got some. We've got mountain needed on the main, we've got each of the laterals broke out there.
Those are repairs. What's your, I'm not sure what you're asking. The, the eighty-three is open ditch. Plain, and then the others are laterals tiled.
Okay, I knew where two was, where's eighty-three at?
It's right on Long Highway eighteen east of Woodmore. It's a big one.
And north, yeah.
Yeah, it goes north pretty ways.
Okay. Well, I mean, between. Between all those laterals, we got. Shunk could change, I don't. Is that an older system or is that one has been approved?
It hasn't been approved, so it is older.
Okay, but we have it reclassified by the lap?
Yeah. I don't know what year, but.
Um, I think Amber brought up that, uh, reclassification sheet by each drain, can we get that put in our folder here, like for this?
Sure.
This meeting or whatever, cause correlating that with some of these drains as we look at assessments might be handy.
So silly question, like eighty-four, where we, um, amount needed is the negative, so. There is a good by quite a bit if all that money comes through, that's a lot, why is there such a difference? And maybe that's easy explained, I don't know, but it, why is there? Why, uh, why is it overpaid if everything comes in by two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars?
That was a decision that was made last year, not knowing when we were gonna get the FEMA funds to offset.
The big piece of the cost of there was when that comes in and the additional interest, because until it comes in, we've got a balance of four hundred thousand. That's outstanding, that's accruing interest, so by leaving the, and it, I mean, it was over a million previous to that, so by getting the balance down far enough that the FEMA fund actually bringing a positive is also mitigating interest expense. We could have done an assessment for the whole, whole balance and then had the FEMA funds come in and just been left over, or. I think there was, I believe there's even been districts that have done like a reimbursement type thing and sent funds back out, but that sounded kind of messy since we've never done it before.
Can we have a copy of last year's, just so I can?
Oh, correlate.
Yeah, to correlate that with this?
Actually, the, I mean, there's a few columns here already, but if we had, uh, correlating with it last year's chart is one thing, but if you had a column of last year's assessment.
Well, there, it is there and it should, it should be filled in and then you would know that amount. The total cost should be filled in and the amount assessed and the amount received should be filled in. March has not gotten that far, but those columns need to be in there so that you can see that information.
Okay, so from, from each project.
If you want each, if there's a project, do you want all five different years of what was assessed, so that's kind of.
Yeah, D B four is a complicated one to put in those categories, but.
I can do the recent, yeah.
Well, maybe if, you know, maybe if there is something that's complicated, maybe it needs to have its own separate little spreadsheet.
Right, and that's my question.
Because that's, this is the one that's heavily in question.
Right.
And I think it's really important that we have everything, you know, in order to, and, you know, if there needs to be something separate, we need to do that.
But as far as the column amount assessed, that should be total what's been assessed prior, so that the board and I know.
Right.
The amount that's already been assessed on that drain.
How many years?
That would be.
At total, you know, I mean.
Since time.
For that project, you know, for whatever.
But there's, yeah, okay, you can have the. Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's repairs and the project, so that's, but I could do the amount assessed for the previous year or.
But the project is separate, right, when the repairs.
But they're in the same fund.
But you should have them listed separately.
Yeah, they should be listed separately.
The project.
Yes.
And the repairs, okay, I could do that.
Well, that would make it a lot clearer.
Yeah, we, we need to keep it separate, it's easier to track it later on.
Yeah.
What did we do on one fourteen in recent time? Just east of Algonquin. Yeah, north, northeast Algonquin from Puncor.
So there was a plane out, um, and then there's some tile repairs that were done, they cleaned some trees out. On one fourteen, and then there were like three or four tile repairs.
Okay.
Are those, do you get the dollar amounts for all of those different tile repairs? Are they separate?
The invoices. And the, they're attached with the repair request.
So maybe, and I don't know how likely that would get, but maybe that would be very helpful. Uh, knowing, okay, it's not a total, you know, one repair of fifty-four thousand dollars, here's all the repairs and it adds up to this. You know?
Yeah.
At least add a column there that says repairs and then have like, well, there were three total repairs.
You could add the repair request numbers, I would actually correlate.
Yeah, it would help, because then that's all helping put that together, so you're not digging and being like, oh, what was that?
Yeah.
Um, we see the re- request number and we can say, hey, can I see request number eighteen?
Yeah.
In two thousand twenty-five, so I know.
Then you can pull the invoice associated.
Then you can pull the invoice associated, because this.
Yeah, and I think we need to add a column in there for project number two, because.
Yeah.
We need to know that project number.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
There's a book for claims for the assessment, so there might, during order, so if a landowner comes in and said, what was this? The invoices are in that book. That I usually do for assessments. So that, you want me to list it on a sheet on here or?
I think so, I think it is important to have that, and, you know, it's. I mean, this is nice that it's in one spot, but yet maybe we need to go to, you know, having a sheet for D B four. And, you know, you know what I mean, just to.
In all reality, I think the actual Excel document would be better than a PDF like this, because you could have it as long as you want, we could scroll around rather than trying to resize it to fit on one page or something. I think it would, I think it'd be easier for all of us to look at and work with if, if we're looking at, I mean, for, for purposes of the, um, the document that's actually voted on and stuff, I don't care if that's printed off and stuff for the official record, but for what we're looking at as far as a working document, I think it'd be easier if we have all the info we need and sometimes you can only print X number of columns on one piece of page.
Is that true?
Or one piece of paper, so.
Well, and I think if it's like kept up all year long, it's helpful. You know, because then it's always current, so if something comes up and we have a question, it's always current, you can say, okay, here's D B four lap two, here's everything for that. I, I think that really simplifies it for us, um, trying to request information. And making sure that we have all of the information that we need to explain it.
And then nothing's forgotten at assessment time.
Yes.
You completing it as things coming in.
Well, if everything gets to, should be, but when everything's at kind of a zero sum balance where you're working with current, not being current, it's easy to say, okay, we, we did our assessments today or set up, anything from that point as it comes in or gets paid can be added to the spreadsheet and then you could have it ready, all year long and have it ready come the next assessment time and it's already done, because it was logged in as you go little by little. And you can kind of just run through things, review them and it's all, it's all ready to go.
A little late for me to ask, if somebody wanna just take the top line or, or the second line and tell me what this all means, so on D B four lap two, there's a positive balance there.
So the warrants are five thousand dollar increments, so the cash on hand is because it can't call in that full five thousand dollar warrant? So it's cash on hand before?
So like if we have a twelve thousand dollar bill, there'll be two five thousand dollar warrants and then two thousand dollar warrant, so it all depends on the next one in line, but the treasurer's office called them in, and I know I talked to Nick about this recently, and he said they were called in about as tight as they could. Um, but yeah, that's, a lot of times it'll end up where there's a five thousand dollar warrant, but there could also be a, I mean, there could be a forty-two hundred dollar warrant, and if there's thirty-four hundred in the account, you still won't have enough to call it in, so.
You, you can't skip around on the list, you have to go in order.
Okay, that's, I was gonna ask that, can you, if you have thirty-three hundred, can you call in a two thousand dollar warrant?
No, no, it's not the oldest.
I've been.
That's how I understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, is the first, first in, first out type principle.
And so as far as FEMA, so when there's a project and, um, we get FEMA money for that specific project? If it's in D B four, main open ditch or whatever, so I'm assuming if it's D B four, that's the main.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's in there, which it, it looks like it is, so then anything that comes in for FEMA is gonna go towards the oldest warrants? Or not go towards those proj- specific projects that FEMA is paying for? Because there's certain invoices that FEMA's paying for, so how does that correlate?
I think that's a question for Nick, is that, Nick does that, am I correct?
Right, yeah.
Is it, am I correct with that, Kyle or?
As far as I'm aware, yeah, I mean, that was, that was.
Nick does the calling in.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I know.
But you're not giving him information as to what, that's, he's doing that.
Right, and that's my understanding of oldest.
Yeah, and my understanding is always that first in, first out, principle, oldest ones get paid when money comes in, so.
Does he need, could that change if they were different direction, I mean, is that a lack of communication, why, I mean, should it be done that way is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I wonder that too.
Maybe that's something we need to ask him.
If that's a possibility.
Yeah, because if.
It's even possible.
Yes.
Yep.
Because when that money comes in, it's, it's specified for those invoices and it's several dollars, so I mean, to me, it should go to pay those invoices.
Right, and I think.
That's just how my brain is working, but that doesn't mean that that is how it works. I just wanna know.
I think we need to ask that and find out, does that need to be coming from us and does that make a difference? I mean, that is.
If they ever came in, if FEMA ever came in and said, hey, are all of these invoices paid? We couldn't really say yes.
Not the way that's to being done now.
Right, and so will that ever get us in?
That's a good question.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree fully in principle, I just, I'm not aware that we can do that, but it's definitely a good question to ask again.
We need to find out, you know, even though this is the way it's been done for years and years and years, doesn't always mean that that's okay.
Right.
We, we need to find out, because this has been in question, we need to find out if we need or needed to do it differently.
Right.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure I'd asked that question before, but I think if we can ask again and, and get some, whether it's code references or whatever, to get a little more, um, meat behind the answer of.
Yes.
This is why.
Yes.
I, yeah, I think that'd be valuable for all of us to know.
Cause I, I do think, you know, that is part of the question, you know, as to what we've been asked of the landowners, so I think we definitely need to do that.
I agree.
Not to change topic there, but what in, in one thirty-two, why is there so much interest? On the BISB and Wesley, I got twelve thousand dollars in interest, I know I had a big bill this.
Thirty-two, one thirty-two.
This spring from doing the wa- FEMA repairs.
So one thirty-two is another FEMA.
Right, but I mean, was there stuff before the spring work we did?
We haven't received. Um. We're still waiting for the FEMA funds to come, so.
I'm saying the bills have only been sitting there for.
Yeah, is that the projected, uh, interest or that's the interest that's?
I would have to look again, but I believe that's the interest that was currently.
I don't know, I just find, if there's twelve thousand dollars worth of interest, that's a lot of interest.
I know. That's a lot.
Fifty-seven thousand dollars over.
So they were probably completed like in twenty-one.
So these are projects?
From the twenty nineteen FEMA damages.
From twenty nineteen that, in Wesley?
FEMA damages, yeah. And so it's still in that, it's.
And the same drain there that we just did more FEMA work to?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's still waiting for that complete project.
Well, I just thought, gosh, we just got those bills.
I know.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll check on that.
So we're still, that's why we have so much interest, cause we're still waiting on FEMA from twenty nineteen.
And there's FEMA funds due, we're just waiting, and that's, the FEMA funds include twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four that we should collect.
Okay, and no projected timeline for twenty nineteen funds or?
Twenty twenty, yeah, well, twenty nineteen is still with July first, they're gonna decide on what.
This July first?
Yes.
Is that that peel?
That's when, yes, that's when FEMA will discuss.
Those are all in that same project?
Yes, yes.
So if FEMA, so if FEMA doesn't pay, the landowners pay the interest on that money that FEMA's not paying?
It's what it looks to me.
Potentially, potentially.
Should they be?
That's the million dollar question.
I think the only other, and I'm, right or wrong or indifferent, I think the only other option to that is assessing the full amount for anything that's due, and then if FEMA funds are received, it either just stays in the account or you try and reimburse it back, but.
Well, I mean, having landowners pay twelve thousand dollars, just because FEMA money hasn't come in seems a bit.
Yeah.
A bit.
So that's, that's what I meant, I have a million dollar question, there's a difference between what's legal and what should happen, and that's where we get into problems, you know.
What's the extra, twenty, twenty percent on the bill?
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly, and that's money they, that, you know, they had a disaster and it should be covered by FEMA, they shouldn't have to be paying, because FEMA isn't.
I agree.
Otherwise, what good is FEMA?
Well, exactly, well, exactly.
But the problem with the stamp warrants is, how do you pay that then?
Right.
Yeah, the only, the only way to pay that is by.
To assess it, assess it, and so, and have that communication that this is being assessed, but.
Yeah, so that's, that's the issue.
It isn't, it isn't, it's a big issue.
And that's the joy of this beingness of FEMA.
So.
Because in one oh five, that was like for Dave Rosenmeyer's washouts there.
Yeah. And that's current.
And that's, that's only got nine hundred dollars worth of interest.
And that was recent, yeah.
That was, that was real, that was pretty recent, but.
Okay, that was, cause I was like, I was trying.
That's what I was trying to correlate the, well, what's the difference here, I'm missing something, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
Cause they got the actual Excel like, put online, I like cross it to where.
Yeah, so drain four lap four, and maybe that, um, question could be answered if everything, um, was on the spreadsheet. There's, um, outstanding warrants of two hundred and nineteen thousand, waivers that are due of three hundred eighty-four thousand, I mean, I know we're not assessing anything, but that interest, a hundred twenty-one thousand, wh- where does that come from? That's, I mean, that's a lot of interest and maybe it can be explained if you saw everything, but that right there kind of just stands out to me a little bit.
That was, that was one that we had a public hearing on, because it wasn't assessed, um, high enough when the project actually happened. And it, I mean, that amount needed is negative forty-three, which.
Well, are we?
Probably higher than a D B two from the looks of it.
Are we waiting to assess things? Or are they being assessed that very next year that we could? Are we waiting to assess things?
We shouldn't be, because that's adding interest.
Right.
Is there some missing up of this year that you haven't had time to do yet that are being held out?
Or?
Any, any drains, are there any drains that are not on here? That, that you're waiting till next year?
Um, I'm not, I would have to look at. Um, I'm not, I would have to look again, but I did, so we have month ends for April, the beginning of May. To be able to do this, you have to have a cutoff somewhere for where your outstandings are, so this is, this is what I have so far. So month end for May would not be done until sometime this week for outstanding. So it's a continuous thing, so you have to do a cutoff somewhere for when the bills. So.
Yeah, and. Sure. Yeah, the. The waivers that are due, just in total seems light compared to what we have for total outstanding.
Right, and that's why I'm still working on that page two, um, how you wanted it, I didn't know if you wanted a separate page, is how you wanted them or?
What do you mean, I'm confused by that.
So like the first page is done, everything's checked, page two, you're working in progress, or what do you mean there?
Right, that's why I just started that and to see what you wanted to do or how you wanted that listed, if you wanted columns added, how you wanted that.
I think the columns we've discussed as far as like supervisor that would have that district and stuff, I think that's easy addition.
Okay. What to add to it?
What's different from this than the first page, I'm, I'm missing something.
I think it's all the same columns, isn't it?
Yeah, they're the same columns, the, just type of what went on or what was done, it was, those were projects and they're not on waivers. On the second page.
Okay, um.
Oh, they're pro- they're ma- all projects.
They're current, they're ones we're currently doing?
No, they're on wa- they're on a waiver plan, so to find out when they were.
Do we, do we not have the formulas filled in for the rest, like the amounts needed are all blank, um, and?
Because they're under the one, there's, I, it didn't generate a number.
Well, it showed on the other side, you got negative numbers, like that first page, you got a couple of negative numbers.
I could put a zero. Zeros, right, I guess.
No, I mean, like DD four is negative four, two hundred and forty-three dollars.
Okay, yeah, yeah, there probably isn't a formula in that one.
Okay, that.
That could be.
Well, that's what it appears to be, it appears that there's nothing there at all.
Right.
But there should be, um, cause I mean, even if you look at the first one, DD two, let three dash two, waivers due is thirty-five. Sum total is twenty-three, so that's.
Be a negative, take it in, right, yeah.
It, it should be a negative.
Correct.
Twelve thousand ballpark.
Yeah.
So then obviously the levy would be zero because waivers will cover it, but.
Right, yeah. Yeah, your amount needed should be negative there, um. Same with the next two lines, the waivers are all over the subtotal.
Lots of them there.
Well, yeah, actually, all of them, so. Are there more drains that you need to go to, I think that's.
Probably, yeah, yeah, I just did what I could for not knowing what you wanted for sure, so I just did this for, um, get feedback and then I can do more.
Okay. Yeah, I think having the Excel doc.
Cause this is a.
Excel, cause you're, you're building it on Excel, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think having the Excel doc is gonna help us review things in general, I mean, even just looking at, you could.
Oh.
Click on a line, see it highlighted and follow the numbers, so.
Yes. Sure.
And if we wanna do like a calculation of a calculated total levy to have the total at the bottom, we could, you know, if it's something in our own mind, it helps us put it together, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Sure.
And, I mean, I think we need to look at. How much is due for waivers versus how much we have in like our treasurer's semi-annual report shows outstanding warrants total, I think we need to look at some of those numbers and make sure that.
Make sure we've got everything.
Between, yeah, between, between what's waived and out there, what's going to be assessed this year and what's currently on the books.
Sure.
Should, countywide should be relatively close, cause those would be the three pieces of it.
Sure.
Um, you'd have funds to come in, funds that are due, and funds that you're assessing, so. Mechanically, that would, I don't know, am I missing anything there, I think that'd be your three pieces you would need.
Yeah. No, no. So then like the repairs, how, how current are they, so when repairs are done, like when do you say, okay, now we're done for what we're gonna assess this year, when, what's the cutoff?
That's what, when we have the month end done for the.
For what month?
Things, so if I had brought this to you in May, it would only be April month end because May isn't done yet, so it's that cutoff or previous to that.
I think we probably need to establish a cutoff.
I agree.
Right, yeah.
So we know anything after this date, every single year goes to next year.
Goes to town. Yeah.
It will be easier to track.
Yes, yeah, so I begin, get compiling these in April. And then by May, you're with it, April month end, the first part of May, then I put these information in.
Well, I think, I think you should be doing it all year round.
Well, yes.
Because then you don't have it all to do in April, it, as things are happening, you should be putting them in there in the worksheet.
And things, things are less likely to be missed that way if it's current.
Yes. Yeah.
All the time.
I don't think we can just do it one month out of the year, it needs to be an ongoing process.
And it would be probably helpful, like right now it's June, so to have it now, it's kinda hard and it's not finished, we can't really approve it today.
No, no, we were.
So, if we have a specific cutoff, then you know.
Right, yeah.
You know, what's being worked upon and we know it's current.
Right.
We know nothing's been missed, I mean, that's, that's the important part.
All right, well. Think this gives us something to look at and if we can get the Excel doc put in the folder too, we can look at it further. After the meeting.
Yeah.
Obviously, yeah, we just.
Make sure households are balanced.
We just had a discussion today, so.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, there was a.
Yeah, no, not even on the chat.
No. No.
So, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if I have anything else burning right now for this topic. I think we can do this more in the role.
Okay.
Anyone else have?
I ask my questions.
Okay.
Additionals or anything else besides what I'm saying? So drain forty?
Yes.
Could change subjects.
Okay.
So drain forty, the city of Whitmore, I contacted them and they had their council meeting last night.
Okay.
And they preferred not to have it the same night as a council meeting.
Okay.
So their meeting would be like July seventh and they were predicting possibly July fifteenth or sixteenth or any.
For a meeting, okay.
Possibly, and they're gonna check on availability.
All right, Tuesday.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Or fifteen, Tuesday. Fifteen, Tuesday evening?
Fifteen, yeah. And they were thinking six thirty or something, but whichever room they find available instead.
Sure.
Yeah, that would work.
Yeah.
So she was gonna get back to me.
Okay.
Location and then do you prefer Tuesday or Wednesday, that was?
Tuesday probably better for more people, yeah.
That'd be good with Tuesday. Then we can have it fresh in everybody's mind, we can discuss it here if we need to for anything.
Well, I just think in even for public, there's less things that go on on a Tuesday evening than a Wednesday.
Right, right, but also, I mean, it'll be fresh in all our heads and we can do our meeting here in the morning and. Remember, go there in the evening, so.
We'll go in there or we meet here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be a little there.
All right, you're there, yeah.
Um, do we have an idea of when we want to have a public hearing to answer the questions from the petition?
We were, we said we were gonna talk about that, I believe, wasn't it?
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth, but do we, I mean, will we anticipate having that public hearing, you know, directly?
Well, if I were having a conversation with the board the twenty-fourth and then we were gonna decide a, a public hearing date.
We'll figure that out.
That day?
That day, or whatever we need to, you know, determine, determine how far we got the conversation and what we need at that point, but.
Or the following.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
So do I need to put on the agenda to set the date and time?
Well, I would, I would put on their question, you know, at least, so, so we would, we'd talk about that.
Sure.
Because I think that at that point, we should be, at least be able to.
We'll talk about it for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, even then, you can still subdate the time and have another meeting in between.
We, we should be prepared as a board if we're setting another meeting now, um.
Right.
Well, absolutely, we should be prepared, but I'm just mainly.
Saying at the twenty-fourth.
Because I don't want to.
At least they have a date, they, they know something's coming.
Keep, yeah.
Correct.
Exactly, that we are working towards that and want to get that set.
Yeah. Nope. Well, yeah, thanks for communicating with that margin, yeah, just let us know if that works for, for them or not on the fifteenth.
Yeah, okay, and also your, um, June twenty-fourth meeting for the annexation for one thirty-three. The Colin's gonna call in, Hudson would be able to call in also, so should we do it on our, our line? Do we still have that?
Yeah, but we had trouble with that phone, I mean, the, the sound and the speaker was not very good, um.
IT was saying we shouldn't.
Shouldn't do that.
Even use that, it should be set up as a, a Teams call.
Yeah, we should probably do that.
We can set up a Teams.
He could call in on a phone number.
Okay, okay.
There's a phone number, Teams, he can call, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think he could probably do Teams, but he couldn't have a phone number.
Would, would Colin be able to do that, he was gonna be driving.
Yeah. Yeah, he could.
Yeah, he can call.
Anybody can.
Okay, he can call.
When you create the Teams meeting, sets up a number with the dial line.
Create a phone number, yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah, Derek can help get that set up if we need anything that way, I mean, I've done a number of them, but yeah, it, it's pretty simple.
Can I ask one more question, I, I just kinda.
No.
No.
That's on the, like, so since we're expecting that five hundred and some thousand from FEMA, do we have anything from FEMA in writing that says this is what we could get?
We're done.
Or how does that work?
Well, actually, we're on appeal with that, right?
Yeah.
It's already been denied once, am I correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
The, the reasons it's been denied is, um, and we could, we could look at, go through all that, but what we. What that'd be based on is what we submitted for closeout, so our actual costs and that's in comparison to what was obligated, but. That's what we've, we've received funds already based on the obligated, seventy-five percent of the obligated funds, so that's the funds that we've already received. And based on the invoices we've submitted, but the closeout is where you clean everything up and, um. Short version is they've said that they're not gonna pay anything more than the obligated stuff because there was three DI's that were not done, um.
What are DI's?
Damage employee number, um, so there were some repairs that were turned in that, um, were not completed.
Okay.
And that was one of the things they said that it. Paperwork with FEMA has been a mess, um, it's been a challenge from the beginning, we've had to change and clarify things many times.
So what happens if that, they say we're not getting that money?
It's a good question, it's, at that point, it'd still be a district responsibility, but. I guess.
Okay, well, that.
That's, that's a big conversation.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. We will move forward then, uh, with potential closed session under Iowa code twenty-one point five one I to evaluate the drainage clerk's performance. And, uh, we have a, what's that?
We have a request.
Oh, yeah, we, we have a request in writing, uh, from the drainage clerk to go into closed session per Iowa code twenty-one five one I.
I would make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Wacter. Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call vote please.
Has?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Now?
Yes. Okay, here, we'll get things switched over and.